I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Again, we appreciate everybody being here for the public hearing. Just a couple of quick items before we go for roll call. There, as I said, we'll ask that everybody mute your phone and/or your audio. We'll call on you at the appropriate time. If you want to speak, please sign up through the chat. We'll use that. I'm hearing Shane saying he's not being picked up and we can't hear him at this moment. Shane, try to start.
Mr. Chairman.
There you go. Very good. Thank you. All right. At this point, I call the meeting to order if we can have a roll call, please. Oh, let me, before we do, are we recording at this point?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please. Ask Michelle to step up to the phone a little bit. We can't, we're having a hard time here.
Thank you. You know, come over here.
Auden and Boyd. Auden and Cohn.
Present.
Commissioner Benson.
Present.
Commissioner Bond.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Long.
Present.
Commissioner People.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Vine.
Present.
Judge Rother.
Present. All right. Thank you, Michelle. With that, the first order of business is we need to do as a commission is to approve the minutes from our November 4th meeting. They've been sent out to the board along with the packet. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So move Commissioner Long.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Long, seconded by Commissioner Bradley. If we can have a roll call vote, please.
Auden and Cohn.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner People.
Aye.
Commissioner Vine.
Aye.
Judge Rother.
Aye.
And the motion passes with our president voting aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. Order of business is in order at this point. Prior to moving forward, since we are here gathered for a public hearing, there be a presentation and some other conversation at that point. But right now, prior to opening, I need to entertain a motion to open the public hearing from the board.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by
Vines.
And consecutive by
Cohn.
Thank you very much. Call for vote.
Previous role.
Here a call for previous role hearing. Any objections? There ain't no objections. Public hearing is opened by previous role affirmation. With that, Cecilia will kind of guide us through our next steps and presentation. Introduce our guests. We'll be hearing the presentation. At that point, we'll have conversation from the commission. We'll have conversation from those on the on the chat. If you're willing, if you're interested in speaking at that point, please sign up to the chat. We'll then address those on the phone and we'll let Cecilia at this point take the, take the reins.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start off this evening with a presentation from the planning team that worked toward the development of the plan that's before you for public hearing. That is the Design Downtown STL Plan. We will then open the floor to public comment. The commissioners might have questions. We're happy to address those after the presentation. There are a number of presenters. And, and then we will open the floor to public comments. Earl, I know we'll keep giving this detailed instruction when it comes time. But if anyone currently in the meeting would like to speak and is on a computer, you can put your name in the chat and note that you would like to speak. We'll go through that list at the time that is appropriate for public comment. If you're on a phone, at one point you will be prompted with an opportunity to unmute yourself. You will likely need to use the button star six to do so, and then you can address the commission as well. So we'll walk you through that at the time. But happy to start taking names now. We, after we've heard all the public comment, we will close the public hearing. While we are closing the public hearing, the public comment period will continue until 5:00 PM on this Friday, November 20th. So anyone who is not able to stay for the entire time but would like to submit comments can do so either by emailing me, that my email address is in the public information. Or you can also submit written comments at the library or here in our lobby at 1520 Market Street until 5:00 PM on Friday, November 20th. A draft copy of the plan has been made available at the library and in our offices as well as online since October 27th. Additionally, all commissioners received a hard copy of the draft plan in their pocket to begin to digest. Given that the public comment period will remain open after this evening, the commission will not take action on it this evening. Once all public comment has been received, staff will summarize the testimony and bring a resolution with recommended action at the December 2nd Planning Commission meeting. At that time, the commission will have further conversation, can continue the discussion and ask questions as necessary and desired. So we just want to make sure everyone on the call understands that this is the public public speaking version. Public comment is not over and there will be no action taken this evening. So with that, we'll go ahead and I'll open the floor for the presenters. Next slide. We have a number of presenters this evening. Missy Kelly from Downtown STL will start us off and we'll also hear from Scott Page from Interface Studios who was the lead consultant on the project. LaShawna Lewis from the Downtown Neighborhood Association. Justin Johnson from the Renaissance Development Associates. Jason Hall of GSL Greater St. Louis, Inc. And Val Patton as well from GSL Greater St. Louis, Inc. So I'll go ahead and turn the table over to them. They're going to share their screen and take the floor. Hopefully.
Okay. Okay. So thank you. This is Missy Kelly. And I am the President and CEO of Downtown STL, Inc. And we are the catalyst for creating and promoting a downtown that attracts investment, economic activity and vibrancy at the hub of our region. So for the past year and a half, we have coordinated the planning process for Design Downtown STL. When we launched the planning process last year, we did so with three guiding principles. Number one, that this plan would build on the momentum downtown has seen as a result of the last official plan, which was called Downtown Now. That downtown is the region's heart and the stronger downtown becomes, the stronger the region will be. And that this plan would be driven by input from the community. Those who live and work and explore downtown are here and, excuse me, and have it in its best interests at heart. In following those guiding principles, we have over the past year and a half organized an advisory committee to help guide the development of the plan, some of whom you are going to hear from tonight. We've held open houses, community forums and special events along with online opportunities to gather input from people across the region. We conducted outreach at multiple events to raise awareness of our efforts and engage the community. And we coordinated with the other organizations to align Design Downtown STL with other major economic development planning efforts taking place across the region. We are confident that this plan reflects the input of thousands of people from across the region and includes the priorities that would like, they would like to see addressed in an official neighborhood plan to help downtown thrive in the future. You may recall that last official plan for downtown was launched over 20 years ago. Downtown Now helped drive much of the momentum downtown has experienced in recent years from new spaces for business innovation, a new connection between downtown and the riverfront, new places for people to live and work and many other amenities. But even with these successes, we were long overdue for a new neighborhood plan. A plan that they, that thought through how to connect these new amenities in order to strengthen the fabric of the neighborhood itself. A plan that looked ahead at what our downtown could be and a plan that would help drive the type of inclusive growth that has eluded our city for so long. That plan is Design Downtown. So over the next few minutes, we will detail the plan and why it is critical for downtown's future that it be adopted as an official plan for the neighborhood. You will hear from people who live in and represent the downtown neighborhood, people who are working to redevelop it and the people who are working to bring our various civic and economic development organizations together to build a stronger St. Louis with a thriving urban core. But first, I'd like to introduce Scott Page, Principal of Interface Studio and nationally renowned urban planning firm that guided and the process and developed the plan for us. Scott will walk through some of the key components of the plan for you. Scott?
Thank you, Missy. And thank you to commissioners for the opportunity to talk through not just our process of putting together Design Downtown, but some of the key priorities that emerged from it. So what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about the steps that we took in putting this together. And certainly, again, some of those priorities. I think it's important to frame this upfront to, to really discuss, you know, what is the role of a downtown plan? And there's been so many downtown plans across the country in the past decades. This is in part because downtowns are competing with one another. They're, they're after the same talent. They're looking for new residential in their downtowns. And we've been involved in a number of those efforts, but we've also watched a lot of those efforts play out. And there's a couple of things that a downtown plan really needs to do. It needs to have ideas that are inspired by other downtowns. There are a lot of downtowns that are trying to accomplish similar goals. Whether that's building new housing or planting trees or even public art. Those are all similar goals that you would find in, in downtowns across the country. But there are also ideas. And this is one of the things that we really focused on here in Design Downtown is taking some of those ideas that are inspired from other places, but really uniquely applying them to the context here in downtown St. Louis. So what are the unique opportunities in St. Louis that sets us apart from other downtowns? And that, that is a piece of what this plan is about. And then also identifying those ideas that are pioneering. Things that other downtowns can't do or haven't done, haven't been able to do. What are those opportunities there in downtown St. Louis? And I think that's a really important aspect of the work here is that this work is both pragmatic. It is also visionary and it's really seeking towards putting together that, that action, those set of action steps that make this something that we can achieve over, over the 10 years of its lifespan. The study area that we are looking at is from Shoto up to Cole, from Jefferson to the river. This is a slightly different study area than what was included in the design Downtown Now in 1999. In part because there were two neighborhoods north of Cole that were included in that effort in 1999. But actually, those neighborhoods are included in an important initiative now called Project Connect. And so we felt it was best to enable that initiative to engage those communities in the way that, that they have been and will, and will going forward. And we can remain focused on this aspect of downtown that's been the focus of Downtown STL and other organizations. When we start a process like this, we're always looking to see how downtown St. Louis compares with other downtowns. And frankly, we get lots of questions about it. So where is downtown St. Louis falling short? What could we do better? What, what about what's happening in X city? We get a lot of those questions. And it is always interesting to start to track some of those metrics, right? And in a lot of ways, downtown St. Louis stacks up really well with other downtowns, both of similar size, smaller and larger. Where downtown St. Louis has fallen behind is in a combination of the population and job density as well as growth, recent growth in downtown. That's something that has fallen behind in some of the other cities. And that's something very much that, that Design Downtown is looking to address. And during this process, we, we dove in, we, we took a good look at the history of downtown and understood how it evolved and changed over the many years. How we can see those bones, that, that foundation of the uniqueness of this place today. We also had to put this in context of all of the, the previous and ongoing plans that are, that are happening in the city and the region. So that includes downtown plans, both downtown Now and downtown Next, which was done in 2009, which was really an outline of some strategic priorities. But there's also some really important initiatives in downtown, including work around Union Station, the Post Dispatch Building, MLS Stadium, for instance, and major initiatives in the city, whether it's the Sustainability Plan or the Citywide Equitable Economic Development Framework. All of these needed to be evaluated and really Design Downtown is the opportunity to be the umbrella that brings the key components and goals of these plans and initiatives into focus for, for the downtown area specifically. We also collected a lot of data. This is one of the mini-maps that we created. We talked a lot about this map during the process. This map just measures street frontage quality. Does it feel active? Does it feel inactive? And we had a measurement system that went with that. And it's, it's one of those data points that really helped to spur conversations. Either it reflected what people intuitively knew but couldn't quite express or it provided some insights that enabled us to develop some ideas around how do we better connect all of those assets and amenities that are in downtown? So to Missy's point about all of that momentum, now is the time to really thread those pieces together and really create a cohesive downtown that's both the neighborhood, center for tourism, center for business. We did engage significantly. In fact, I would say this is one of the, you know, one of the highest levels of community engagement we've seen in downtown planning across the country. Over 2,000 residents, business owners, visitors, employees, et cetera, participated in this process. And part of our philosophy was to go to where people were. We did not expect to have major public events where people came to us, but instead we wanted to go out and address and meet folks on the ground in a different forum. So we had pop-up meetings. We had this major public open house that was in the fall of 2019. We had the advice of an amazing advisory committee that included about 30 local leaders, including residents and business owners. We went out and talked with the Downtown Neighbors Association, both Missy and myself went there on a number of occasions. And certainly tried to reach the broad set of stakeholders that we see in downtown because we really needed to pull this plan from their ideas, their concerns. That's what the plan really needs to reflect. And we used some really unique tools. This is a representation of about 1,000 ideas that we received using just one tool. So we designed this, what we called a collaborative map. There was an online version, but we also did a massive wall-sized version. And we asked people about their ideas, observations for specific locations across downtown. And you can kind of see the hotspot of where we got the most comments. But yeah, we, we had 1,000 ideas just from this activity alone that really helped fuel the development of strategies and enabled us to say, look, we heard you. Let's present that back to you and make sure that we're hearing you correctly. And now let's start to talk about what the priority should be from that kind of a process. And in the spring, when the pandemic hit, we unfortunately could not do a couple of the in-person public outreach sessions that we, that we had planned. So we pivoted and we designed an online open house. It was asynchronous. We had over 600 folks participate, which was wonderful. And we learned a lot from that, from that activity. So we were able to present the strategies that we had developed collectively as a team. And then get some insight on how people felt about different aspects of them. This was like the final question of, of that open house. They'd already answered probably about 15 questions before this. That just asked them to rank some priorities from a number of key strategies. And you see what comes up in this, and we'll talk about this going forward. Certainly things about housing, economic development, the design and feel, look and feel of streets. All were constantly cited throughout the process. In addition to comments around how we make downtown feel more like a neighborhood. So this is just a summary dashboard of the different types of events that we, that we undertook, the different ways that we, we sought to engage both in person and online. And when we posted the draft plan, we did get about 200 comments from the public on the draft plan, which we then went through and made some, made some changes to Design Downtown based upon some of those very good comments. So it's been a really rich process for us and we've really valued the opportunity to work with everyone on the ground. And then we assembled this plan. And the plan is based around five key goals. Talk about some of those tonight, but, but loosely speaking, those goals are about, you know, housing in downtown as a neighborhood. Down, the downtown economy, downtown streets, downtown open spaces, and then identity, culture, art, the, the kind of soft but really critical aspects of downtown that gives it personality, right? And makes, encourages folks to come back time and time again. Under each of those goals, there are a series of strategies and from each strategy, there's a series of actions. So much like I'm sure all of the plans that commissioners have reviewed previously, you know, there's a lot of detail here. The intent is to, to take the big ideas and then ask the question, well, how do we achieve that? What actions are necessary? And then ultimately, how are we going to prioritize? What should we start doing in the coming year? What should we do in year five and year 10? So that is what is embedded in the document itself. There are two documents, the one full document of Design Downtown and then a shorter summary that, that hits a number of these priorities and provides an overview of the process. Now, one of the things before I speak to the priorities is that it's, it has been really, really clear that pandemics have been just, they have hit downtowns the hardest. Across the country, they have hit downtowns the hardest. It's a combination of the loss of all the hospitality-related activities. Certainly the drop in daytime population. We no longer have office workers going out and supporting local businesses. There's just been a fundamental shift. And then with the, with the rise of the, the social and civic protests around the murders of George Floyd and many others, downtowns have also been home to those protests, right? That is where those protests have played out. Mostly positive, but also negative. And that has happened across the country in, in a number of downtowns. And so downtowns have always been the center of celebration and protest. In this, in, in 2020, where we have so much to discuss and so many things on the table, it's no different now for downtown St. Louis. So there's a few things that we have learned in looking at downtowns across the country with respect to the pandemic. But also, also some of the other issues that I mentioned. One is that open spaces are essential. It's why we saw so many people out in Forest Park when the quarantine was locking everyone down, everyone desperate to try and get out and experience the outdoors. That means we need to think carefully about how our parks are designed or programmed. Certainly the street, street design matters significantly. And it matters a lot, particularly in places like downtown where we're trying to keep our restaurants afloat during the pandemic. But that also that small businesses are particularly vulnerable. They were vulnerable before the pandemic. The pandemic just put a big spotlight on that vulnerability. And so a good chunk of Design Downtown is about small business and thinking about how we diversify the downtown economy. So that gets to some strategic priorities, which is how I'll finish off this, this discussion. And then I know there are a few others that like to speak to the process and then we're happy to answer questions. One of those strategic priorities is specifically about inclusive entrepreneurship. So how do we help existing and new businesses thrive in downtown? How do we support the businesses that often don't have access to the kinds of funds and support that would help them be successful? And how do we diversify the ownership of businesses and types of businesses downtown? This is where we really see an opportunity in downtown St. Louis that so many other downtowns cannot achieve at this point. Either because they are too expensive, they don't have the space or other factors. And I think downtown St. Louis can really provide a home for inclusive entrepreneurship in a way that other downtowns simply cannot achieve. And that is a real opportunity. And it's also an opportunity in part because we have a lot of space in downtown St. Louis. Some of that space is great for retail and it's historically been used for retail and restaurants. But we can't put retail and restaurants everywhere. Those things were struggling before the pandemic and they're certainly struggling now. But we also have spaces in downtown St. Louis that are built for a different set of uses. They, they're bigger, deeper spaces. They're harder to use for those traditional kind of commercial uses. So how do we begin to expand the range of activities that can happen downtown? Including things like light manufacturing, or if we have someone that's making products and wants to sell them. These are great spaces for those types of activities, but it requires real intentionality about how we connect people with those spaces, how we provide them the supports to help their business grow and work with property owners in that process. We heard time and time again, more, we want to see more stuff to do in downtown. And so activating downtown streets and parks is a really critical piece of this. And it might be one of the biggest lessons that we see from downtowns across the country over the past decade. The downtowns that have people come back time and time again are the places that are programmed. That program is changing. That program is inclusive. So it's thinking intentionally about attracting folks of all different backgrounds. And that is the opportunity. This is actually some work that we were suggesting might be a, a good possibility in downtown St. Louis, which is bringing together this little music studio, which are instruments that anyone can walk up and play. But we have identified in the plan, a number of places across downtown that could be home to an additional suite of programming. Some of those very temporary. Some of them more passive, some of them more active, but the idea is to start to build some positive activity back into downtown and build upon the work that a number of organizations are already doing. Whether it's in City Garden or at the Arch or in other locations that are, they're starting to think about and they've been programming for some years. We're saying this is the opportunity to really take that idea and push it much, much further. It's also a low cost compared to many other things like major infrastructure changes that can have a major impact on downtown. These things also speak to the, the opportunity of creating a really unique downtown neighborhood. So many told us, look, we need more housing. We need more housing. We need more residents. More residents support more businesses. It helps to fill in the gaps and connect the assets that are here in downtown. But there's also a real need for different types of housing, different housings. Not just lofts within an older building, but newer development that offers some housing flexibility to families of different sizes, different backgrounds, different interests. As a part of that and related to building more housing, we need to think about how we strengthen the downtown community. This, I would say, from the comments we received in the draft plan might have been the most frequently cited comment on the plan. Which is really just an expression of concern around crime in downtown. So I will say very clearly that I think the, the number one thing that we can do to address concerns around crime and public safety and perceptions of public safety in downtown is to have more activity, right? More activity helps to create safer streets. It helps to build a positivity in downtown. And ultimately, that's how downtowns across the country have seen a reduction in numbers around crime. And so we have, we do have specific recommendations in Design Downtown targeted towards the issue of crime, whether that's bringing back the downtown ambassadors, which would help to provide a number of services within downtown. But it's also a building or on, building upon the interest and involvement of the Downtown Neighborhood Association, for instance, in encouraging them and many others to take action. The, the implementation of Design Downtown cannot be done by one organization alone and nor is it the responsibility of the city to, to foster the, the full implementation. It's going to require a lot of partnership, particularly from those on the ground that care deeply about downtown. We've noted and had a lot of discussions about how we connect better to the river. There are some opportunities. Le Cleed's Landing, of course, has been, it's been a really unique district for so, so long. There have been certainly recent proposals for development in Le Cleed's Landing and as well as proposals to extend additional park space along the river and really treat that as an amenity and, and make sure that that is connected, better connected to the rest of downtown. That's something that the Design Downtown document reflects and certainly supports. All of those activities are, are really positive steps for Le Cleed's Landing. Design Downtown also speaks to creating a greener and more sustainable downtown. It won't surprise anyone on this committee that things like tree coverage isn't terribly good in downtown, which again is not, not specific to St. Louis's downtown. This is a common issue with downtowns across the country. If we think about tree planting as an opportunity to bring people together, but also to reduce the heat island effect, create a stronger and healthier environment and then integrate new stormwater management, both within parks and streets, something that MSD and the partners have been doing so well in, in the city already. That's an opportunity for us to think about open space and streets. That's an opportunity for us to think about open space and streets, not just as beautiful places to be, but also as a critical piece of infrastructure. And so Design Downtown does speak to some of the specific opportunities around open space. Certainly, it highlights upgrading and improving the Gateway Mall, which there were many, many comments and ideas on on how to do so. But it also looks at space that is underutilized and thinks of them as opportunities for orchards, for tree planting, but also looks at some opportunities for reusing some empty lots as potential temporary open spaces or permanent ones. So the plan is looking at not just the number of open spaces, but how they're designed and how they function as infrastructure. And then lastly, the priority is around, one of these priorities is around the downtown streets. And we we discovered early on in the process about the bond in 1923, it actually widened some of the existing streets. And so there's been this longstanding process in St. Louis to create some very wide streets that really facilitates getting in and out of downtown, but not so much connecting downtown to itself. And so we think of places like Tucker, Market, Olive, and others as opportunities to really become the system of boulevards that helps to reconnect downtown and do so in a way that does not hurt any of the existing traffic. These streets are over capacity already, based upon the recent transportation plan that was adopted a couple of years ago. And so we have a lot of opportunity here to make a big statement by how we redesign our streets. So those are some of the critical priorities. But in the plan, we've also identified the need to connect this really engaging planning process with so many to the immediate needs. And of course, start to think, well, what are we going to do in the first hundred days after after adoption? There's a couple key, couple key steps we can we can begin to take so that we can really connect the need to recover from the pandemic with the planning of Design Downtown going forward. As you say, the implementation of Design Downtown going forward. So you can see here, these are a couple of the steps that we've identified for the first hundred days. A few of them are about establishing a clear baseline and mapping out some recovery activities. What's really unfortunate about the pandemic is that a year ago, we said, look, we have the best data on downtown St. Louis, and there's been many, many years, because we went out and collected it. We looked at every single building and parcel and street. And now, a year later, we need, we need to do some of that again because the pandemic has changed the nature of of how it feels. So we have a baseline from a year ago. Let's measure it again and figure out where we need to best target and recovery activities within downtown. And that includes building upon the good programs that are already in place, providing direct assistance to businesses that SLDC, the Economic Development Partnership, and others have been involved with. We can also begin to to work on updating the existing zone. And and that includes a few things. There are some, it's not a form-based code, but it is some form-based measures that Design Downtown speaks to, making sure we're talking clearly about setbacks, making sure the code says something about curb cuts, and considering some ideas around non-accessory parking lots, and being very, very clear that when we say we want to expand the range of economic activity in downtown, and that might mean light manufacturing, what does that really mean in this day and age? Because for a code that was written many years ago, some of the examples for manufacturing aren't quite as relevant today, certainly as they were in the 1920s when it was first, when it was first put together for the city. There's also tasks to organize the management. How do we manage implementation? How do we maintain involvement by those that have built this plan? We've recommended pulling together some task forces that are representative of the diversity in downtown, but also the range of voices that we that is needed to push this plan forward. There obviously been steps taken to address some of the immediate concerns around crime. We do talk about that as a as an issue that we absolutely have to address in the first hundred days. And then we can even begin testing some new programming because that is a low-cost improvement. Let's go out and test a few things and see what what works and what doesn't, and really begin to reinforce and start to build up an effort to do more active programming and events and art within downtown, which I know is has been on the minds of so many even before this process started. So I think with that, I'm going to pass it back over to you, Missy. But I will certainly be available and ready for questions when when that time is there.
Thanks, Scott. So hopefully, you all can see why we are so excited about this plan and feel strongly that it will be a great guiding light for us going forward. We, I mentioned at the beginning that this plan was created with the help of an advisory committee, which was comprised of dozens of St. Louis's brightest minds, all of whom are committed to the principle that this downtown is the downtown for the region. And and really, no one better exemplifies that commitment than LaShana Lewis, who's going to speak next. LaShana is a downtown resident, and she's the chair of the Downtown Neighborhood Association, the founder and CEO of LM Lewis Consulting, and she is the director of the St. Louis Equity and Entrepreneurship Collective. So LaShana is also a member of our advisory committee and would like to offer her thoughts on the Design Downtown Plan. LaShana?
Thank you, Missy. As everyone heard, my name is LaShana Lewis, and I wear many hats from which I will speak to you from today. So as you heard, I'm an entrepreneur. I founded my own company, and I also work a lot in tech. And I believe that the future of downtown, our city and our region heavily relies on our ability to grow and attract young, tech-focused talent and those who are like my age, who are who are switching and and doing new things in our career. I am a leader on diversity, equity, inclusion. That's what LM Lewis Consulting focuses on as well. And I know our future is dependent on the ability to ensure equitable opportunity to all within our community. As a downtown resident and the board chair of the Downtown Neighborhood Association, it's very important for me to hear the voices of those of us who live here day to day. I know that many of us who may not live in downtown don't think of it as our traditional neighborhood. But for those of us who live here, we we do know different. For an example, I was actually at one of the open houses for Design Downtown STL. And I was at a board that asked people to 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 say the first word that came into their mind when they think of downtown now and the words that they want to come to mind after downtown is revitalized. And I kind of closed my eyes and and held back a little bit, expecting people to write some of the worst things I've ever heard. But actually, when I stood back and I looked at the board, and it was a bunch of different post-its, it was things like "prime for growth," "a lot of possibilities," "hopeful," "fertile." These were all positive words that I wasn't expecting to hear from people who were residents of the St. Louis city area. So it tells me that people have hope. People are looking for change, and they're holding out hope, which is the most important thing whenever we're trying to present a new plan, is to have people that will be able to back it despite our challenges. We want the neighborhood to grow and thrive. And it's not just because we live here, but because we know that downtown is also, we say, our front door, and is also the heart of the St. Louis region. And we know the stronger a downtown is, the stronger the region in general will be. So I've been a part of the advisory committee for Design Downtown since last year, and it often aligns itself and realigns itself with downtown residents and businesses to create to like a unified, diverse vision for like a common future, a common vision for our downtown region. Design Downtown STL was developed over the past year with a community-driven purpose, and that represents the hopes, dreams, and visions of all who participated. And it also reflects our input and the hard work that we put in as as citizens and and workers within a downtown region. So to wrap all of this up, it makes me think of three things. Diversity, downtown should be diverse. Whenever I go into a downtown of of any major city, I see people from all over with all different backgrounds and all walks of life. And we want to make sure that when people walk into downtown, they feel welcome, they feel represented, and they feel see vibrancy. We want to see people on the street walking around. I love seeing like art and hearing music in the downtowns I've been in before, and it kind of brings the city to life. And that's what a lot of people go to, a downtown region, to experience. Activity, like I said, we need to see the people on the streets, but we also need installations. We need different art and creativity, different types of housing within downtown regions. So for those that might not want to live in the big box warehouse, loft, they have the brownstones that they can move into, different sorts of ways to attract different types of people and different types of family structures. So diversity, vibrancy, and activity, those are all needed in order for downtown to become the place that we believe it can be. And all of those are critical components that were just presented in the Design Downtown STL Plan. I I just think that overall, I can just say I fully support this plan. Thank you to Missy and thank you to Scott for doing such a a great job of roping us in as many times as possible. It wasn't a one-and-done thing. We met very many times over very many days and bringing so many different people who were invested heavily in the downtown region together in order to push a plan forward that was equitable and inclusive. So thank you.
Thank you, LaShana. So one of the greatest parts of my job, and especially in this past year, working on this plan, is working with the people who are so committed and investing their livelihood into downtown and to make the the St. Louis region better by making the central core of St. Louis better. And one of those people is Jason Johnson, and he was also on our advisory committee. And he is the founder of Renaissance Development Associates, and has focused his work on developing downtown west and midtown. And he's currently working on the Jefferson Connector project to connect downtown with those neighborhoods to the west. So Jason, if you would like to say a few words? You might be on mute.
I'm mute myself. Thanks for the introduction, Missy. Yeah, it's been my pleasure to be part of this board. It's been very exciting to take other people's opinions and see what we can kind of do to bring all these ideas together. A little bit of background on me, like she said, I own a company called Renaissance Development Associates, and we've been working to redevelop this midtown area where downtown west meets midtown alley over the last 18 years. And as she said, our latest development that you've kind of maybe seen that we've been working on is called the Jefferson Connector, which is kind of connecting those two areas. We've been working to address how to create density and vibrancy and how to eliminate islands of inactivity and build connections between our current and proposed assets in these areas so that the entire area thrives instead of the little pockets. The success in the principles creates a safer, more livable area that creates fringe development that has been crucial to bringing these districts of the city together. And it's been very, very well seen in in the work that we've done in in Midtown and been very excited about that. As a member of this Design Downtown STL Advisory Committee, I've seen how this idea of connection is driving force behind the broad vision of the specific details of this plan, which I think is really great that it's rolled out this way. I ask that you approve it as the official neighborhood plan for downtown. Again, I think there's been a lot of really good feedback from everybody, including people not only on the board, but that participate in all these events. We know that the last official plan for downtown led to the development of several key attractions and destinations that we're all very proud of. Some of those things have been, you know, like All Park Village, New Arch rounds, City Garden, and Washington Avenue, all stemmed from that previous plan. So it's, you know, vital that we have a plan, that we stick with it, that we move forward, everybody gets excited about it and surrounds the excitement with moving those things forward. But as we look forward, our focus needs to be on how to connect all of these assets like we've proven so successfully in Midtown, with now completing over 70 buildings as we've been knitting things together. We need new green spaces, but better street activation and new developments along these connecting corridors. Which the exciting part about this plan is that all of those things are included in what has been presented. This plan really does attract new development that strengthens the core of our region and reactivates the neighborhood. The plan focuses on, I think, entrepreneurship that will work to create creative spaces on critical blocks to help fill vacancies, which as a developer, you know, super important. And one of the things that we've really seen grow in all the development work that we've done is really pushing on flexible leasing and bringing this entrepreneur spirit and this this kind of startup market to the table, filling the bill and helping, you know, push them into larger spaces that they needed. Again, all things that have been are being promoted in this plan. It also proposes changing zoning to allow for a wider array of business activities, which we have issues with, you know, quite frequently right now. It also seeks to activate streets and parks that can help bridge existing areas with new uses. All these parameters will strengthen the downtown community to better connect the people with the neighborhood, which is vitally important, I think. I'm particularly enthused by the plans to jumpstart some of the new catalytic projects, a handful of early actions that can be in, have an enormous impact on the character of downtown. As a developer, I truly appreciate the plan's call to invest in housing to help downtown grow, downtown grow the neighborhood, one of the things that we talk about all the time in in our field. The plan includes a call for significant amount of housing to be priced below market rates to maintain housing for a wide range of residents, really bringing, you know, the density together on multiple levels that we don't necessarily always see in the current product that's available. I also believe the plan's proposal for infrastructure upgrades, like coordinating with the Brickmind Greenway to create that market chestnut loop, and redesigning Allo Plaza and the Tucker Boulevard will transform the physical space of downtown and make it more attractive to, you know, people that we're trying to recruit from a residential and business perspective. All of these initiatives and the entire downtown, Design Downtown STL Plan will lead to stronger connections for downtown and the people who live, work, and visit it. And I respectfully again ask for you to approve this official neighborhood plan for downtown. Thanks for listening to me, Gab. Hope we can move this thing forward.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, so our final speakers are Jason Hall and Val Patton. They are joining us from Greater St. Louis, Inc., the newly formed regional economic development group that is combining the strengths of five current civic organizations and around a common vision and strategy for fostering inclusive growth. So Downtown STL Inc. is one of the organizations combining under Greater St. Louis, Inc., which is one of the, and one of the core tenants will is to elevate, is to grow the urban core. And this will elevate downtown and the urban core as a regional priority. Part of that work will include coordinating and implementing the Design Downtown Plan. So Jason is a member of the Design Downtown Advisory Committee. So he's been working with us on this for over a year and a half and is the incoming CEO of Greater St. Louis, Inc. And so he is going to speak to the importance of this plan to the future of our region. Jason?
All right, thanks, Missy, and good evening, everyone. And Missy, LaShana, and Jason, thanks so much for your comments about the plan and and just what you all do every day to move St. Louis forward. I would also be remiss if I didn't specifically thank our city planning professionals, who I've had the pleasure of working with much more intensively over the past few years. And I am always inspired by how much they do, often with so few resources compared to their peers, and always place the best interest of the city at heart. So it's been a pleasure to work with them on this project as well. As many of you know, and Missy referenced, five of the private sector economic development groups have officially voted through their boards, hundreds of board members, to combine and form Greater St. Louis, Inc. so that we can, as we've articulated, drive inclusive growth with a more unified voice, a bold agenda, and particularly relevant to this conversation as one metropolitan region anchored by a vibrant urban core. And I think you've heard that theme mentioned quite a bit today. When I visited other markets over the past few years to learn why they're growing faster than St. Louis, how are they organized, what are they taking on? You go to places like Indianapolis, and almost anyone you talk to there will refer back to a former mayor, Mayor Hudnut, who said, you cannot be a suburb of nowhere. And that was a way of articulating the importance of downtown. For those that that go back a ways and can remember the Pierce Report in St. Louis, which talked about the importance of downtown and the central city overall, that it is the common and collective turf of the region. It is the place that defines the region's global It is the place that defines the region's global image to the world and that the psyche, self-confidence and future prospects of the entire region depend. And that is one of the great philosophical shifts that will be occurring in Greater St. Louis as the role of the urban core is elevated. And I can think of no more important priority than moving this plan into action. That is a common characteristic of high-growth regions and more inclusive regions, that they embrace their downtown and urban core. And I think it's worth pointing out, as this plan embraced a very aggressive process to be community-driven, community-led with active listening, I think that the, the larger equity play to remember here as well is that a job in our downtown, in our core, is closest to most forms of transit, including our public transit system. So for our residents that may be transit-dependent, this puts jobs even closer in to reach and will help us address, in one way, our inequities. The other thing that I would mention is we have got to strengthen our intermediary capacity, if you will, to implement community-driven plans like this. We are significantly under capacity as a region from an economic development standpoint on the private sector. When we look at our peers, there are regions like Indianapolis that are a third smaller in population and have twice the capacity. There are organizations like Greasy DC in Cincinnati, which helps work in a public-private partnership on strengthening their downtown and over-the-ryan neighborhoods, which have more staff just focused on that downtown area than the entire regional economic development capacity that we have in the private sector in St. Louis. So we have got to grow our ability to do this work. And that is going to be important going forward as well. The creation of Greater St. Louis Inc. is one step in that direction. I would also add, is an important reminder, community engagement does not stop and end with the publication and hopeful adoption of a plan like this. It lives. We need to keep embracing that set of values as we move forward. Because as we know, when you get into implementation phases, we will hit unexpected issues. And we've got to remember that we have, we've got to keep listening to our residents shaping and adapting. I would also emphasize, as some have said, to remind ourselves of the incredible impact and suffering that is going on with many of our downtown businesses today. Lots of businesses are impacted by COVID, but the effects have been particularly acute in downtown. And so we need to strengthen this for them as well. With that, I would just encourage that with, at the completion of this, this process, that this plan be adopted and that we move forward so that downtown can reach its full potential. And as a consequence, this metropolitan region can reach its full potential. With that, I will turn it over to my colleague and co-incorporator of Greater St. Louis Inc., Val Patton. As was mentioned, will serve as the Chief ENI Officer, as well as the President of the Greater St. Louis Foundation. Val?
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Missy. Thank you, LaShawna. Thank you, Jason, and thank you, the Planning and Urban Development Committee, for this opportunity to come before you for a few minutes just to talk about supporting this plan. As we are working together, it is back, good to be back with Jason as we have worked together in previous lives. But also the opportunity, the work that we will be doing is a natural progression on bringing a lot of the fragmentation and segregation that has gone on in our city together and being more unified and seeking possibilities as we move forward. I will be particularly focused on some work that is being done as we speak. The Civic Progress Racial Equity Task Force, which has five subcommittees. One is business, one is community, both of those I serve on. And as we're looking at a very targeted plan around talent and around diverse business acceleration in our city, which will very much complement work that we've already started with the Diverse Business Accelerator, which takes existing businesses and we're looking to grow and scale them particularly for diverse-owned businesses and women-owned businesses. And also our multicultural leadership development program, which is now in its fifteenth year, the fellows program, where we have not only business leaders, but we also have entrepreneurs in those different cohorts. And we really need to move, as many of us do all we can to keep ourselves safe and healthy. If your core is not any good, your other parts of your body are not good either. So we really have got to take that analogy to strengthen our core. But in that, work is also being done in creating a ten-year jobs plan around inclusive economic growth. And with that, with more small businesses, more people are employed, more people have a life which is good for them to sustain themselves. And it also will contribute to our regional GDP at the end of the day. So with all the work that is being done now and will be done in the future, I think it is very, very important for us to have a very vibrant, sustainable downtown so that we can employ people and so we can become a magnet for talent to our region. Thank you. Missy?
Okay, thank you, Val. So I'd also like to say thank you to the Planning Commission for providing us this opportunity to speak with you about this plan. As someone who has worked for years on trying to help downtown move forward, I can tell you that this plan is truly what we meet, what we need today, probably more than ever. As was, you know, mentioned several times, the, the effect of the pandemic, you know, puts us in a, in a situation where we need strength moving forward and we need a, a solid plan and we need this community to engage, just like it did in developing the plan, in implementing the plan. And so I, with that, I am going to wrap up this presentation and open the floor to questions.
Thank you, Missy. Let me first thank you and your team, Valerie Patton, Jason Hall, Jason Johnson, LaShawna Lewis, Scott Page and Missy. Thank you all for your time and your presentation. Here's how I want to move forward. Just a reminder, there will be no action from the commissioners tonight on the plan. We won't take that vote this time, however. I do, and this is a public, a public forum. So here's how we, there's about thirty-three people on the call. Here's, I'd like to manage that. I typically go through the commissioners, allow them to ask questions, which may be beneficial for all on the call. Then it will go to those on the public, the public forum. What I'll ask commissioners to do, if you have one or two questions, please pose them at, at one time. I'm going to ask, Missy, if you would become the conductor of your team, who would best, best respond to those questions?
Sure.
At that time, following the commissioners, then we'll go to the public forum. Again, if you're here for the public forum and you want to speak, what we ask that you do is in the chat place, please place your name, the organization or community you're representing, and at the appropriate time, I'll call on that. So moving through the commissioners, the first one, I'd, I'd start with Alderman Shane Cohn, and then I'll come back to Commissioner Jake Banton. Alderman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks to all those who have spoken with respect to the plan this evening. I really appreciate the, the time, energy and effort, you know, towards putting together a plan for downtown. I know, pardon me, I know we didn't really get into particulars with respect to the plan this evening. But, you know, there's a, a number of things that always kind of come to mind for me as an older person and also as someone who has sat on this planning commission off and on for the last dozen years or so at this point. You know, one, you know, there, there was some discussion about green space in the city of St. Louis. Downtown, in comparison to other downtowns, probably has more than its fair share of green space and also surface parking lots. So I'm curious specifically, you know, how the plan addresses, you know, or tries to remedy the, the gap in downtown, which is, you know, mostly around green spaces and parking lots. Two, you know, the public right-of-way, it was mentioned, you know, that our, our downtown streets were, you know, widened several decades ago. You know, I've had feedback from, you know, developers, from hoteliers, from the certain folks at the conventions, Visitors Commission. I've had feedback from residents downtown, you know, that it's a labyrinth, it's a maze of one-way streets, that's not visitor-friendly, it's not tourist-friendly, it's not resident-friendly, you know, and there's definitely street capacity. This is a conversation that I've had on a number of occasions and probably most notably when we were in the process of doing Arch to Park and having discussions around redesigning the entryway, as it's called, into downtown from the interstate. At the time, it was Interstate Seventy, now it's Interstate Forty-four. And turning, you know, some of those one-way streets into two-way streets and, you know, reconfiguring some of the street grids down there that are wide enough for capacity for cyclists as well. I know that we have some planned improvements along that in, in terms of cycle tracks and whatnot, but specifically, you know, getting rid of the, the maze, if you, if you will. And then also, just from an economic development perspective, how are we positioning downtown? You know, I mean, I know it's been mentioned, restaurants are struggling, retail is struggling. But retail has been struggling with a bigger issue than the pandemic for several years, if not a few decades at this point, which is online sales. So, you know, as more and more retail is focused on the, the online market, what are we doing as a region? Obviously malls aren't being successful anymore. One of the largest owners of malls in the St. Louis region recently filed for bankruptcy, if I'm not mistaken. You know, there's several that are probably on the list that would be there in the next few years, if not the next decade. You know, part of that is also oversaturation in the St. Louis marketplace with malls. So we have not really, as a region, developed a retail strategy. And St. Louis, the urban core, could really benefit from a coordinated approach and strategy to retail and that, you know, we are the center, the geographic center of this region of, you know, three and a half million people, and I think in the fifteen county area. So what in the plan is really discussing those economic development opportunities and how to target those things. So I, I've got many more, but I'd say kind of pressing top of mind. Well, and Earl, if you'll indulge me, one other one. We have a plethora of stadiums downtown that are vapid spaces, you know, for roughly, I don't know, three hundred days out of the year. You know, that take up many, many, many city blocks downtown. And therefore during the three hundred days that they're not active, create even more open spaces, if you will. So, you know, as we have future conversations with other sports teams, whether they're basketball teams or, I don't know, rugby teams, is there a position on having more stadiums downtown? So those would be my four at this point.
Okay, so I've got green space, the streets, the public right-of-way, and, and how that's addressed in, in this plan. And then, and I, I think Scott can speak to both of those as, as well as even the, the stadiums and how that plays into our economic picture here. And then Jason, if you, after Scott, want to take the positioning of downtown and economic development going forward? So Scott, you want to start?
Yes, happy to. And Alderman, thank you. And Missy, thanks for summarizing all those. I was, I was keeping track of them in my head. So let's get to the first question around open space, which is the first thing you brought up. So downtown St. Louis has about the same amount of open space per acre as the rest of the city, which is a lot less than what is recommended. All of that said, compared to other downtowns, it sort of depends on the downtown, right? There are some downtowns, downtown St. Louis has typically as, as more green space and there, and it has a far less than other downtowns. The issue, and this is what we heard through the public process, is that it's not so much the quantity of debt, of open space in downtown St. Louis, it's the distribution and quality. And so that, that's where the concerns really came out, which is why this plan, you know, doesn't, it doesn't propose a lot more open space, it proposes better open spaces. Sometimes those are smaller, newer ones, but a lot of other times, it's what's make the most of what we have so that there is more access to quality open space. And the streets are a big part of that, that process. So thinking of the streets not as, you know, highways, and some of them are wider than your highways, but thinking of them as opportunities to integrate green space and treat them as linear parks is one way of beginning to address some of those, those issues, particularly where residents feel like, "Look, I'm, I'm eight blocks away from, from the Gateway Mall. That's, that's far for me as a resident. I would like something closer, for instance." We did follow, we followed mostly the recommendations from the adopted transportation, downtown transportation plan in 2018, which did emphasize looking at integrating bicycle infrastructure throughout downtown streets. So that, the decision at that time was to integrate that bicycle infrastructure on the one-way street system and to create a better network of attractive streets. And so that's something this very much reflects. And where the plan differs slightly on the recommendations from one street to another of that transportation plan, we've noted very clearly. And I should note that the transportation planners that did the 2018 plan were on this team as well. So they were actively a part of the discussion and can bring the value of the work that they did previously to, to this effort. So let's see, parking, open space, stadiums. We, we have not proposed, there's certainly no position in this, in, in Design Downtown for any new stadiums. And in fact, you know, one of the things I'd really like to emphasize is that there's been so much work to create the moments in downtown, those big amenities or developments, you know, these, these investments. The opportunity here is to really start to think about how they are connected. So we almost felt, particularly given some of the outreach that we did, that it would be irresponsible to come up with another big, big investment on the scale of a stadium in addition to what's already on the ground, but to think about how we weave all of those together. So I hope that helps a little bit, Alderman. I know there was, there was a lot in there.
Yeah, I, it does and it doesn't. I mean, specifically with the street grid, you know, I'm hoping that as part of this planning exercise, that you all took into consideration the user experience. I mean, it, because we are not a very user-friendly city, you know, and whether that's, you know, just getting around downtown, downtown west, you know, or even getting to downtown. You know, we force people through our design practices to do certain things that are not naturally inherent to human behavioral patterns and, and/or, you know, just logic or reason in some cases. Having two exits off of a highway downtown, you know, duh, it's going to cause traffic jams as you're getting into downtown. You know, having stadiums that are empty three hundred sixty days out of the year. One of the, you know, chief complaint- One of the, you know, chief complaints that you get about downtown is the lack of vibrancy that's down there. You know, that vibrancy changes when there's a Cardinals game or it changes when there's, you know, a Blues game, but it only changes for really part of downtown. And then also, it only happens less than a third or quarter of the year. The remainder of the year, it just creates massive amounts of city blocks that are underutilized during that time period that could be better served, you know, however else. And so I recommend with, you know, residents and commercial space, but, you know, what have you. But, you know, the other thing that, you know, I asked about was the kind of economic development component to this plan as well. And I'm not sure if that's you or Missy, if it's someone else on the team that can kind of illuminate that part of the plan as well.
So just to clarify your question, Shane, what I had written down is the positioning of downtown in the economic development picture. Are you talking specifically in this plan or are you talking like going forward with GSL?
Yeah, so, well, I guess either really, but, you know, since GSL and therefore Downtown Inc. is kind of the one working, you know, Downtown Neighborhood Association, you have all kind of been working together on the plan, but specifically within this plan, you know, is there an economic development component? I mean, I, you know, I think that that drives some of what we do here at the Planning Commission in terms of, you know, zoning and, you know, other types of discussions that happen here pretty regularly. And I know, you know, as we developed one of our neighborhood, you know, development plans or neighborhood plans, you know, we discussed things like, you know, socioeconomics and, you know, disparities in healthcare access, things of that nature were part of our Greater Gravois Neighborhood Plan. I'm just wondering to what degree those types of elements were considered in the planning for the plan that you all are proposing today or tonight.
I'm happy to. Alderman, it's Jason Hall. Appreciate those comments. And I think from a big picture, I think we, let me just start macro and then kind of move in from my view on context. As a region, as a metropolitan region, we are falling behind. We are not growing at the rate of even our Midwest peers. And while they are smaller than us today, their growth rates are more substantial. So we have a problem with the size of the pie and it's not getting as large as it should and we're not reaching our full potential. Secondly, you know, for those that measure this quantitatively, we are one of the most decentralized metropolitan economies in the U.S. So we have tended to sprawl within a flat growth environment. And that also creates a set of challenges. And I think for those of us that have lived and worked downtown, we feel that. And I think it is incumbent upon all of us to champion for this region that the region will not grow. And for those that benefit from sprawl, that's not growth. That's a short-term win, that we've got to have that strong urban core in downtown if the metropolitan region is going to grow. And St. Louis has not created as many jobs in its urban core as some of our much higher growth peers like the Charlottes, the Nashwells, the Indianapolises. So that's a big picture part of it. But looking to the optimist side of this, Shane, it does go into, you know, one of the great opportunities, and LaShawna's probably better positioned to speak on this than me, so she should feel free to step in, is we are, through things like T-Rex, creating an entirely new generation of businesses for whom downtown is their home. And as they're leaving that incubated space, are moving into what was previously vacant buildings. That is a longer-term strategy, but that has been a huge source of opportunity and vibrancy for downtown that gives me great hope. I think with the geospatial industry sector being a large growth opportunity for the metro, we are seeing downtown benefit from the emphasis on the geospatial sector in putting offices in downtown that were net new to the entire region. That's real growth. And they're coming downtown because of that clear value proposition. I saw in the comments, John Burgland, who owns buildings downtown, and I think of Jim McKelvey and what he's doing with Square of locating accessible technology jobs in downtown. Build-A-Bear moving its headquarters in downtown. There are some that are seeing that value proposition. I think we need to do a better job of saying, part of the reason to be in downtown is it's critical to metropolitan growth, but we need to do a good job of defining that value proposition and enhancing that user experience, which I think is spread throughout this plan. And that's critical to growth because people have to know what we stand for and what's in it for them as well. And I think we need to do a better job of both articulating what that is and actually making the changes that strengthen that value proposition to drive that future growth.
Thank you, Jason. I just, we need to chime in here for everybody to remind, I want to be very respectful of everybody's time. We've, we're already at an hour and a half at this point when this is a public forum. Reminder to the commissioners, we will have an opportunity to come back and have detailed discussion after, at a later point. But I do want to be sure that at least at the 30,000 foot, the commissioners have a chance to ask some very broad questions or very high-level questions and give us some brief answers. I'm just, I'm saying that before we start because we can go all night, but let's not because there are, there is other business that has to be attained and addressed at this point. So Commissioner Banton, if you want to make a comment or have any very high-level questions.
Thanks, Earl. I'll be sure to dive down deep in our next meeting. Couple of high-level questions. For me, any, any plan like this anywhere in St. Louis, to me, is at ground zero as a neighborhood plan, it needs to represent the folks that live and work in those areas. So I want to say thank you for presenting tonight. Obviously, a ton of work went into this, you guys brought out all the stops. I must say, I'm a little disappointed not to see any of the four aldermen that represent the downtown area in attendance tonight. I hope that they make some time for our December meeting to come. But, you know, overall, very good job. Some key points that stood out for me, 83% of the street frontage quality in downtown rated as unfavorable, 20% of all parcels are parking. So we obviously have a lot of work to do. Two, two quick, very high-level questions related to my first comment about sort of engagement in the neighborhood. So your advisory committee obviously had a lot of sort of heavy hitters in the St. Louis region on it. How many of those people are residents of downtown? And do you think that you should have had more residents on the advisory committee? And second question, sort of high level, tying back into sort of the positioning of downtown. I'm curious, mostly for Scott, is there anything that you have recognized or in your planning efforts for other downtowns and cities across the country that specifically that they have done and are doing successfully, maybe small-level things that St. Louis could immediately start doing? And the rest I'll get into next, next meeting. But those are my two, two top, top questions for now.
Okay, I can take the first one. So LaShawna Lewis was on the committee, she is the chair of the Downtown Neighborhood Association, as we mentioned. We, Karen Leverens was also on the committee and Karen is, or at the time was a downtown resident. We also had some developers, we've talked to Jason earlier, you heard from Jason earlier, but Seamus McGowan, who I think may be on as well. You know, developers that have residential buildings are very, very in tune to the residential experience. So, you know, so that in terms of who was a resident on the committee, and then I would also just share that we did a lot of really specific engagement with residents, targeted communications to them, offered them opportunities to give their feedback, and they did. They're very, you know, they are passionate about this neighborhood and we definitely took advantage of that. So the second question, Scott, do you want to grab, take that?
Yeah, James Page is a downtown resident as well.
Right, James Page, that's right.
Anyway, yes. So some of the simple things that other cities have done, well, there's two things that immediately come to mind, and I've already spoken about one of them, which is about programming. It is remarkable what has happened. So Grand Rapids, I think, is kind of known as a best practice, like folks look to Grand Rapids and say, wow, that's remarkable growth, and they've done amazing things in that city. But Macon, Georgia, which no one really talks about, and frankly, is a lot smaller than St. Louis, also has seen some significant improvements by programming, by creative programming. So planning a few events, taking chances and doing some things as pilot projects was a really, really wonderful step for them. And it did not cost them that much money and it really did, I think, change a lot of the discussion and demonstrated how much action can follow from a process like this.
Thank you, Scott. I will now go to Commissioner Boas and then followed by Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Boas?
I don't have any high-level questions, but just want to compliment you on your focus on the open space and also this nesting of neighborhood within region within nation. I think that's a really important way to look at it, and I really think that quality open space can make a huge difference now and help draw people later. So job well done.
Thank you, Commissioner Boas. Again, if anybody's online that we have not spoken with, if you are interested in any questions as a public, please do so in the Zoom chat and we'll call on you in a moment. Commissioner Bradley?
Just a couple of comments. Great job. Thank you guys for all coming to present us tonight. Looks to me like a significant amount of work was put into all of this. I do want to echo a few comments I've heard. Obviously, the center of this is a neighborhood plan, those that live and work in downtown St. Louis, everything, a lot of this should be based around, we do have a lot of people that come in and out from town for different things. And so a vibrant downtown and programming seemed to me like they would be very interesting. I do have always concerns when we talk about programming within the right of way and things along those lines. It's just the nature of my animal, being an engineer. And you guys talked about using the traffic plan from downtown as well. So you're talking all the right things to me. I'm just interested to continue to listen to everybody else's comments. And again, thanks for all the great work you guys have done on this plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. I'll have Commissioner Long, followed by Commissioner Peoples. Commissioner Long?
Hi, everyone. Well, Missy, Jason, LaShawna, Val, the whole team, everybody who presented tonight. It is clear that a tremendous amount of community outreach went into this. It is well thought out, a lot of really great ideas, very creative vision. I have a couple of comments, mainly just some of those high-level questions, Earl, I'll try to be quick. I, you know, to me, downtown is the heart of our city and downtown is the heart of our region and really is the economic engine of our entire state. And I think there's so many opportunities to make downtown feel more like a destination, feel more like an actual experience that is not just nine to five. And I think this is a good roadmap to get there. So I want to thank everybody for the hard work that went into it. One of the things that I felt was missing from the conversation tonight, and I realize that this work began in 2019 and did not take into account the global pandemic that we are now living in, is sort of how can this plan help us rebound from the economic impact of downtown, particularly when it comes to corporate vacancy and bringing people back to downtown? Because the current situation, as I see it, is a little bit of a chicken and an egg situation. Everybody left downtown and then created this vacuum and you saw what happened this summer. I think that a robust, vibrant downtown is a deterrent to crime and can help change the perception of downtown. So I'd like to know how and what way, understanding this plan was developed before COVID, how and what way the plan can help us rebound from COVID or shift gears in any way possible? But also, I guess my other bigger-picture question here is, as I said at the open, downtown St. Louis is the economic engine for the state of Missouri, the St. Louis region, definitely the city. And I want to know what sort of regional buy-in or state buy-in are we getting from our partners at those levels to execute and see this vision through to fruition? And I like last, any last little thing. So many great ideas in here, but I, I want to know if the stakeholders think that, is it too stretched thin to cover that many square miles? From one of the previous slides, it looked like the square mileage of our defined downtown under this plan is larger than many of our comparable cities. So I just want us to not worry, but be cognizant of, do we focus in on a few things and make those really great? Or do we do a lot of good things? And that's not really a question, it's mainly just an observation or a comment. But I guess my biggest two questions are adapting to the realities of a post-COVID downtown and regional and state buy-in. Because again, downtown St. Louis is the, is the engine in the heart of our state, region, and city, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jacob. I'll answer your second one first and then Scott can talk about the response to the pandemic. And I'll just say that this is really the first step, is getting this adoption from the city, that once we have that, then we will be able to, you know, go to our partners at the state level and the regional level with this. That said, we were very conscious of the surrounding neighborhoods in developing this plan. If you look at the members of the advisory committee, not all of them are downtown, you know, residents or, well, obviously not all residents, but even, we even had people from outside of downtown that were regional players there because this is so critical to the region. So I would say that, you know, we've got to have a good start with that through the process and the engagement that we did. Getting this adopted by the city will then give us what we need to take it to, to get formal buy-in and support and implementation. So Scott, do you want to address that?
Yeah, you know, and I'd say, Commissioner, I think you hit on a point that Commissioner Cohen mentioned earlier, which is around the question of user experience, right? That is something that downtown St. Louis struggles with. It is only in part due to scale, but it is really about the look and feel of those streets, which does diminish some of the opportunities for economic development, right? So when we're talking about programming, when we're talking about the need to focus retail and restaurants at certain places within downtown, that is part of the answer to your question. So that this, this plan is already saying, look, we understand downtown is large, it has many things going on. It doesn't need to be all things to all people in all places. And we have the opportunity to focus in different portions of downtown for different reasons. But one of the things that really struck us about the pandemic is that it's just, it hasn't changed anything in downtown, it's just made all of the existing issues that much more apparent. So, right, those concerns around the impact on businesses and small businesses, there was already concerns around the future of small businesses in downtown. And frankly, one of the things that this plan does that puts you all in a really wonderful position is that you have data, like real data about your downtown, not something that was collected five years ago or 10 years ago. You have real data established as a baseline before the pandemic. And I've already reached out to some folks in downtown that collect data around issues, for instance, of office vacancy and a couple other, a couple other metrics. We're starting to talk about, well, how would we put together a dashboard to really understand the impact of the pandemic, not just in the short term, but potentially long term? And that, and that's in mining the information we have, right? Because the impact of a pandemic on a restaurant is far different than the impact of a pandemic on somebody that does Amazon fulfillment or is making specialty candles, right? So the level of granularity that we have provides us the forum and the opportunity to think about the ways that we can recover. But I think it has, it has helped to shape portions of this plan. But I think it has helped to shape portions of this plan and the economic development chapter that focuses so much on small business is only in part a response to the pandemic. We were already talking about those things when the pandemic hit, and then we said, okay, now we need to double down on some of these ideas and think about how we reflect and reinforce the good things that are happening in the city to support the small businesses.
Thank you to you both. I have, you know, I have lots of other thoughts about housing and perception and safety, but Earl, Chip, and we will get into all that later. I just want to thank you all for the level of detail and the vision here tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Long. Commissioner Peoples?
Yes, at this time, I don't have any high-level questions, but I just want to thank the, the presentation was well thought of, and thank you for all the hard work that you put into the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peoples. Commissioner Vines?
Yes, I am also really impressed with the comprehensive plan that has been, can you guys hear me okay? Okay. I'm really impressed with the plan, and everything looks good. And I'm just a little wary of a couple of things, and I'm hoping maybe you can kind of ease my concerns. I was around for the Downtown Now Plan and then Downtown Next, and I wanted to see what kinds of safeguards are embedded in this plan that will hold people accountable to adhere to this plan? Because a lot of plans have come and gone, and they're very expensive, and they take a lot of time, and a lot of people take a lot of effort and investment in these things, and only to see developments, proposals, things that come down the pike that really fly in the face of the plan that was set forth. Case in point, the Century Building was demolished in 2003, which was a direct affront to the Downtown Now Plan that specifically and expressly stated that no parking shall be created in the blocks immediately fronting the old post office. And lo and behold, you know, as soon as someone dangles a carrot with some money behind it, the plan is somehow, you know, disposable all of a sudden. And that is a real detriment to the city at large. I think it says, you know, it really diminishes the effectiveness of these plans. And I wanted to know, A, what kind of safeguards are in place to prevent that kind of thing from happening? And we're seeing it happen right now on Olive and 19th Street with the demolition of some very usable buildings with a lot of potential in favor of more surface parking, which is what downtown needs, like a hole in the head. The other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, I'm surprised that it hasn't been mentioned, and maybe as I go through the plan, I'll see it. But St. Louis is in a very uniquely different position than a lot of cities in our peer set in that we are contending with a suburb, Clayton, where a lot of cities, you know, most cities have a downtown, and then there are suburbs. We have our downtown and suburbs, but also a suburban downtown that is often a magnet for businesses, corporations, employers, retail that flees downtown in favor of safer, more sanitized, less dense, less crowded environs. And that's Clayton. And I wanted to just stress the importance of, you know, that gives us a very unique challenge, that downtown St. Louis needs to really kind of be positioned as the anti-Clayton. There's things that need to happen downtown that could never happen in Clayton. And just for the, you know, a relevant example, it's just recently in the Post Dispatch that Clayton is now considering murals to be something that's controversial. And cities don't think things like that are controversial, nor should they. And I just wanted to make sure that the emphasis was there, that downtown is decidedly an urban place for all kinds of people. And I really, really, really appreciate what Scott said earlier, that it doesn't have to be everything to everybody, but there should be something. If you're looking for it, you can find it downtown. And that goes deep into the heart of the annals of the city ordinances and everything. There's a lot of things that are actually illegal in St. Louis that are very weird to not see in downtowns, like strip clubs. And I'm not here to propose that we start, you know, overturning all our ordinances on the books or anything like that, but I'm just saying, like, there needs to be a collective consciousness that downtown is the center of all things, that you choose your flavor and you can find it downtown. And that's for everything, popular, family-friendly, and otherwise. And so I just wanted to just mention that, and then see, most importantly, what are the safeguards to compel developers and investors to adhere to these plans? And thank you so much for the time and investment you put into this plan.
So I will start, Commissioner, with just saying that I think that one of the best safeguards that we have for keeping the plan and the intention of the plan as the true guiding principle for development in downtown is the process that we followed, that it was an incredibly inclusive process that had, that included many different organizations, people that were residents, businesses, business owners, people that work downtown. And I feel like the, you know, in many ways, with this plan, the community has kind of spoken in terms of what it is that they want to see in downtown. And so I think that when we run up, and I think, you know, that it has happened in the past, but when we run up against, you know, something that is contrary to the vision or the intention of the plan, that being able to refer back to that process and also to the, you know, significant investment that was made in developing the plan, and also reminding that with the Downtown Now Plan, when we stuck to it, and I'm not saying that there was never, you know, an issue with it, but when we stuck to that plan, I mean, that was a very successful plan. Downtown Next was a very different kind of plan, and it did not have the level of engagement in the process or the adoption process that downtown now had. And when we stuck with the Downtown Now Plan, you can see that we had many positive results, and the growth that we've experienced in downtown was really a result of that plan. So, you know, I don't know if anyone else on the team wants to speak to that, but I think that's really what we have to rely on. And we did work closely with the city in this process, so I'm hopeful that our city partners will help in guiding that as well.
I'll speak up a little bit to it. As a person who lives, works, and plays in downtown, I've been here for six years at minimum. I'm actually a resident originally from East St. Louis, Illinois, so I've basically been seeing downtown in one form or another ever since I was a baby. And now at 44 years old, I've been able to kind of see everything from the progression to having the St. Louis Center Mall, which was my hangout, to being able to walk around and see how businesses grew and shrunk and moved out. I even remember Old Southwestern Bell. So if that really solidifies how old I am, I've seen it all. But one of the things that we must remember, Commissioners, and I ask for everyone to remember this, St. Louis is in a really unique position in that it has a national park as its front, in its front yard, and its backyard has stadiums. And in between, you have everything from residents to small businesses to large corporations, to industrial corporations. And now you have to kind of work with a plan that's going to fit as many of those particular major demographics as possible, and then also make it diverse and equitable and inclusive. So I'm surprised Scott didn't go screaming, running away when he saw that and said, there's no way I would be part of that plan, because it's a lot to consider, because you have so many different points of view. And one of the things that I loved about this plan is that there weren't suburbanites telling us what a downtown should look like, right? You want someone who lives, works, and plays to have a prominent voice, an inclusive voice. So I thank Missy for inviting me and asking me to speak, which she did contact me to do so. And I've spoken up on a design downtown STL plan before. But again, you can't create a system for people if you don't include the people that are affected within it.
Right, thank you, LaShawna. We've addressed all the Commissioners' questions. I really want to have two, I want to say the last 30 minutes for me, but really two very quick questions here. One is simplistic. The vernacular downtown has a historical nuance to it, using that term, that is much older than 20 years. When you say downtown, that draws, I think somebody said, it draws your picture to that environment. Has that ever been looked at as, how do we get away from that classic stereotypical title? And the second question is, I'm always concerned when we say, build it, they come. You just said it, that you didn't go to suburbanites to ask them about downtown, but yet we're also asking them to come downtown. So how do we, how do we fight that build, you know, that kind of mentality of, build it, they come, and then they leave?
Just a point of clarification.
Those are the things I wanted to get to, the team to speak to.
Just a point of clarification. I wasn't meaning that suburbanites don't come or aren't included in the plan. I was just saying that it wasn't just suburbanites that were included in the plan.
No, I get you, I'm sorry. I did not mean to imply that.
So, Scott, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so it's interesting, the question of how we think of downtown as an idea versus how we define downtown as a place, right? I think it's partly what this question is about, and it came up a lot. Because for those that don't know downtown, all of the city is downtown, or just the parts they choose to define as downtown is downtown. So it becomes a very individual kind of perception. And we had some discussions early on, we talked about it with the advisory committee, like, do we refer to this as something different? This is also downtown and downtown west. Do we look at alternative and combining them or doing something different? And I think ultimately where we landed is that there are so many businesses and residents, particularly those that have made a home downtown, that really do identify with it as a place and an idea where they are aligned, that we should continue to, you know, to use those terms to define this place and the plan itself. But I totally, I totally get where you're coming from, because we, that was quite a bit of circular conversations we had to try to unpack that. And I think it also gets to Commissioner Vines' question, when you brought up Clayton. You know, you look at these things in comparison to places even in the region. And we did work in Atlanta, where downtown Atlanta is facing competition from four other downtowns, I'm going to put them in quotes, but dense development areas, right? But they don't have the original kind of texture and feel and urbanity that downtown has. So that's really how we try to distinguish downtown here, right? It's going to be difficult to compete with other places on a one-to-one basis for certain types of things, but we can make downtown really unique, and that's partly what the plan is trying to discuss, right? Whether it's about experience or the types of businesses, creative businesses, Jason mentioned T-Rex and the things and activities that are happening from there, and GA. Those are the types of things that we are trying to put a spotlight on so that we can help to better bring out the personality, I think, that exists.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. I just needed this moment to ensure, because we are in a public forum, that if there have, I've not seen anybody raise hands on the Zoom. I will ask that Celeste, if, Cecilia, if you can verify for me that there is no one in the chat room at this point for public comment? Or is there anyone on the phone for public comment at this point? If you're on the phone, please press star six, unmute yourself, and identify yourself and the entity in which you're calling for. And I'm going, going once, on the phone, going twice, on the phone, going three times. I hear no public comment on phone. I see no public comment on the Zoom chat. Are we correct with that, Cecilia? So you're on mute, your phone's on mute now, I think. The podium is on mute. There you go. Scott may have to unmute the podium, because I think he did it earlier.
I mean, there is a comment saying that someone wants to speak publicly. I can't tell who it's from, though.
I'm not showing it. I saw a gentleman said he wanted, he just wanted to support the plan. That was Don Burglin. I did not see anyone else at this point, if I'm missing them.
6:36, but it says it's from Planning and Urban Design City St. Louis to everybody.
Oh, that's Don. Don is Cecilia. And we're trying to keep Don from speaking, that's why we put a mask on him. At this point, we will call, entertain a motion to close the public forum at this point.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alvin Cohen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Vines. Call for previous roll hearing, no objections. At this point, we will now close the public meeting, hearing on the downtown plan. Let me first simply say, and before Cecilia comes up, to say thank you to each of you for your time. This new world of COVID Zoom and meeting and information, we're seeming to manage well. I hope I've maintained as well through this moment. Cecilia will go over where we are on this process, and then we'll move forward from there.
Thank you. Can you go to the next slide? Awesome, keep going. Again, okay. So we have ended the public hearing, but as I previously mentioned, we are still going to continue the public comment period, so we can continue to take comments by email, by phone. And I will be taking those and summarizing them for you all in the resolution that we presented at the December 2nd Planning Commission meeting. So at that time, that's when staff will present the resolution and summarize any additional comments. There'll also be an opportunity to continue the discussion and hopefully refine some of the questions that you all have. And at that time, you'll also be presented with an opportunity to take action on the plan itself. So lots coming up. December is also going to be a busy meeting for us.
Thank you with that. Also, and remember, Commissioners, if you have, we have the draft in front of us, please plan your time between now and December to go through it and then itemize your questions. Obviously, that's where we can get into some of the 5,000-foot level conversations there for detail. So Scott and Melissa will be ready for that, I'm sure, at that point, and their team. Any other action on this that we need to take at this point?
Nope, not at this time. We can move right into the only action item on your agenda this evening.
So for those of you that have come solely for this purpose, we do thank your attendance. The Commission has a few moments of activity on another item, so thank you very much. You may take your moments, stretch, disappear, stay on, and listen if you choose.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Cecilia, if you want to go ahead then?
Awesome, yeah. As I mentioned, this is the only action we have on your agenda this evening. I was hoping to keep it light for you all. It is a historic landmark nomination for the Central Baptist Church at 2842 Washington Avenue, at the southeast corner of Washington Avenue and TE Huntley in the Midtown neighborhood. Go to the next slide. A request is made to Cultural Resources Office by the owners of the subject site, the Central Baptist Church's Board of Trustees, to initiate the process to designate the Central Baptist Church as a city landmark. The church building was constructed in 1975 as a mid-century modern design, and the previous church that occupied the same site was destroyed in a fire in 1971. The congregation itself is actually celebrating its 175th anniversary in 2021 and is hoping to commemorate the anniversary with this designation as well. There are a number of criteria under which a landmark can be designated per the National Register of Historic Places. The two that this building is being proposed under are that it has significant character or value as part of the development, heritage, or cultural characteristics of the city, state, or nation, and that it is a unique location or singular physical characteristic represents an established and familiar visual feature of a neighborhood, community, or city. Next slide. The photo at the top here is the church's primary elevation looking southeast from Washington Avenue, and the photo at the bottom is the church from the opposite side on Washington Avenue. Next slide. The photo on the right is a detailed image of the stained glass windows on the facade, and on the left is a detailed image of the stained glass doors at the entry. The congregation was founded in 1846 and has been named the Central Baptist Church since 1885, when it was moved to Midtown. The church has been located there since, I'm sorry, has been located there since 1913. And the change of the street name to TE Huntley Avenue on the western side of the building, from Olive to MLK, was done in order to reflect the building, from Olive to MLK, was done in order to reflect the important role that Reverend T.E. Huntley played in the development of the church and its congregation in the neighborhood between 1942 and 81. Noteworthy community members such as Dred and Harriet Scott and Ms. Julia Davis were congregants of the Central Baptist Church, and the congregation was active in supporting Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s civil rights efforts, and Dr. King did preach at the Central Baptist Church in 1961. The church itself was designed by Cong- Congregant William E. Lee and is distinctive for its embodying of ultra-modern design of rubble, stone, brick, and stained glass. And landmark designation does not include the congregation's educational center or parking lot, it is simply this building that we're looking at to see things. Next slide. Staff has reviewed the above petition for compliance with the Strategic Land Use Plan, which is designated on the site as institutional preservation and development area, which intends to preserve existing institutional uses that positively influence the enhancement of surrounding areas. Given that the proposed petition would allow further preservation of an important community anchor and its design is a positive contribution to the city's urban character, staff finds the request in compliance, in compliance with the Strategic Land Use Plan. Ultimately, what the approval of this landmark does is that the petition contains exterior design standards, which would be reviewed if any changes were proposed to the building in the future. So the intent of the standard is to prevent demolition of the building and to ensure that future changes don't diminish the character defining features of the building. The details of that can be found on page 15 through 17 of the petition that's attached to your resolution. The public will have two opportunities to provide their comments on the proposed designation as well. The first opportunity will be at a public hearing that will be held at the Preservation Board as part of its regular meeting on November 23rd at 4:00 PM. And the second opportunity will occur at a public hearing to be held at the Board of Aldermen Housing and Urban Development and Zoning Committee. I have a few context photos that I'll move through fairly quickly. This is a photo of the north side of the church, which includes the education center for the church across Washington Avenue. Next slide. To, this is to the west, across T.E. Huntley Avenue, which is Salvation Army Midtown Service and Treatment Center. To the northwest is a parking lot and a light industrial building. And to the east of the church is their parking lot and industrial building, and an industrial building. Next slide. This is just an image of the intersection as a whole, so you can see kind of the way the four corners come together. Next slide. Given that the request will allow for the preservation of an existing institutional anchor, staff finds the request in conformity with the Strategic Land Use Plan, and the petition will have a positive impact on the development of the city and recommends approval of the designation. I believe we may have a couple of other representatives from the petition on the line if they, if they held on. Gail Brown is the Chair of Trustee Ministry for Central Baptist Church and may be present on the call, and we also have in our office here Dan Krasnoff, the Director of Cultural Resources Office. If you have any additional questions, we would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Cecilia. What I invite is, while we, I'll have Dan speak first, but then I would like Gail to have the closing conversation for the church. I will say, as we're waiting for Dan, as an ordained minister, Central Baptist has played a critical part in the Black community and the Black church for those that have us preached and served in that community, so I applaud their request, and I applaud the action at this point. So Dan, if you have anything at this point, I'd invite you to make those comments before I entertain the Commissioners' questions, if they have any.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just speak very briefly on this. Central Baptist has been interested in becoming a city landmark for a, a number of years. We've been working to try to, with Alderwoman Marlene Davis, on a potential multiple church nomination. We ended up doing it one church at a time, so Central Baptist is the first of what are probably two or three more of these Midtown area church nominations as city landmarks. But I think Cecilia covered a lot of the basic groundwork about why Central Baptist is a significant landmark in St. Louis, both for the modern design of the church and for the impact of the congregation on the community and the neighborhood of, of Midtown. So I strongly recommend that the, I agree with her interpretation as well regarding the, the questions that are specific to sort of the, the, the plan and planning in this part of town, and encourage the Planning Commission to support this proposal so it can appear at the Preservation Board meeting on Monday. And again, I would also like to represent that, per the ordinance, the Board of Public Services also signed off on this application too, and Rich Bradley's here. So Rich, thank you for that. And Gail Brown is here. You know, I told Gail that she might be asked to say a few remarks. I didn't ask her to prepare anything specific, so she's welcome, obviously, to, to testify, but, you know, in the past, I've seen in this forum more questions for the owner applicant than, than presentation by them. So I just want to give you all that information about how I prepped her for this meeting.
Gail's quite confident, able to handle stuff. I know her will.
Hello, everyone. I just want to say, first of all, thank you to the Commission for your consideration. We are so excited to be at this point of consideration for this landmark designation. Our tagline at Central Baptist Church is making disciples and transforming lives, and we feel that this is yet another opportunity to educate our community on the significance of our church, provide outreach, and just really to honor the history of our church in the community and the impact that it has had on the community. So we're very excited about this designation, and, and we thank you for your consideration, and we also thank Dan and our Aldermen for just working with us along during this journey. So in the interest of time, that's all I'll say for now, and be more than happy to address any questions that the Commissioners may have.
Thank you, Gail, and congratulations. At that point, I'll simply make a quick run. I'll do it this way, by hand sign. If you have any statements, Commissioners, please just unmute yourself, identify yourself, and make a statement if you have any. That's Commissioner Cohn, Commissioner Banton, Commissioner Boas, Commissioner Bradley, Commissioner Long, Commissioner Peoples, Commissioner Vine's.
Commissioner Bradley, just a quick comment. At the request of Dan Krasnoff, the Board of Public Service, as he mentioned, did take on a review of the application and without question, recommend approval of this city landmark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Any other Commissioners?
Just a quick question is the, this Commissioner Banton, is the bell tower included in this application as well, or is it just the building itself?
The bell tower is included. It's a very, it's one of those character-defining features of the structure in its original design, and really, it's a very prominent component. So yes, it is, it is called for preservation and is part of the landmark designation.
Great. Thank you.
A question from Commissioner Long, and sorry if I missed it. Obviously, a well, well-deserved recognition. Plainly, and maybe, Dan, you can tell me, what does the designation of a city historic landmark mean? And I just want to make sure I'm understanding. This is a historic designation from the city of St. Louis, correct?
Yes. So, so the city has a couple of different ways to designate and protect historic structures. We're probably more familiar with historic districts because they cover larger areas, obviously, but the city has 130. I assume after a month or two from now, it'll be 131 when Central Baptist is added. But these are individual structures that are recognized as single-site historic designations. So with the designation comes a set of design standards that have to be adhered to. So if the church were to apply for a permit for exterior alterations in the future, we would review those changes against the, the, the petition document, which includes a set of standards that are based on the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation of buildings. Though that's the, sort of, the, the wonky component of it, the, the broader goal is to highlight and, and show and, and make clear that we have some structures that are so significant they deserve landmark status on their own, and they don't need to be part of an agglomeration of other buildings around them, and certainly, Central Baptist deserves to be one of those buildings.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to thank you for that.
Yeah. So, so just quickly, Don asked me to, to reiterate this. There are 130 city landmarks now. With Central Baptist, there will be 131.
All right.
Oh, the most recent ones, the, well, actually, the most recent one was Al's Restaurant down on the riverfront. But then the last few years, there's been the Maya Angelou House, the Eastern Star Baptist Church, and actually, I should have said, this will be the 132nd city landmark, because the 131st will be the Oscar Waring House, which should be at a HUD committee hearing in December.
Great. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. With that, again, the recommendation is that the Planning Commission files a proposed city landmark designation, be in conformity with the Strategic Land Use Plan, and that is, it is discussed in petition and make a determination as to impact proposed designation would have on the physical development of the city, and the Planning Commission recommendation will be forwarded to the Preservation Board. I would entertain a motion from the Commissioner.
Earl, I would like to move that we approve this item tonight.
It has been moved by Commissioner Long.
Second.
It has been seconded by Commissioner Boas. Call for vote.
Previous roll.
Call for previous roll. Any objection to previous roll? Hearing no objection to previous roll, Gail, please let your pastor know with our blessing that this will move forward from the Planning Commission.
I will do that.
What the church does in that community.
Thank you so much.
And just to put a point of reference, the, it's next door to Salvation Army's new building in that community, so they are making big progress in there. So thank you. With that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Prior to closing, before Don takes off his mask and says what he wants to say, oh, he has nothing. Wow. I will first say thank you, Commissioners, for entertaining and indulging this very diligent meeting from, that we've had. I know it was a lot of questions that we want to ask, and we'll have the opportunity in December. But again, I wish each of you a very pleasant holiday, a very safe holiday. Mask on, justice done, and at that point, I'll let Cecilia have follow, final statements before. She's shaking her head, no. With that. With that, I will entertain a motion for a closing meeting.
I'll move.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second? Commissioner Long seconded the meeting, let the meeting stand adjourned and, and recording yet at this point.